Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Ten o'clock. I think I... We're gonna call this meeting to order. Okay. And introductions, I know Jim is here. Thank you very much to be here today. And of course, our staff is with us, which is wonderful. And I know that Ellen Boyer, our lawyer, will be here shortly. And we actually have a former board member here. We have Julie here. Yes. Really glad to have you here with us today. All right. The very first item on our agenda is to consider any agenda amendments. And I do have one that the... If you look down at number 10, we still have the Audit Committee under Ad hoc Committees. It actually, we decided last time that we would move that to Standing Committee Reports. So we just need to move that up. Okay? Okay. Is there... Are there any other amendments to the agenda? All right. If not, do I have a motion that we can accept that with the change?
So moved.
Okay. Barbara? And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Joe? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So the agenda is as amended. Okay. The next item on the business is our citizens' time. We don't have any cards from any citizens. Were there any citizens that planned to talk? Okay? All right.
This is the time?
Yes, this is the time. Yes.
I'll let go.
And if you can come on up here. Yeah.
Wow, it's very official.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. My name is Nancy Maak. And I'm a member of the... I'm on the Board of Directors of Friends and the Goodson Library which meet here. And so anyway, so welcome.
Thank you.
Double the meeting here. I just wanted to... I don't exactly how to say this, but I know there's an ongoing discussion locally and nationally about removing certain books from the libraries. And I just want to put in a plug for librarians and the wonderful job that they do in calling through the vast array of books that are available to put in a library and maintaining that. And I feel like the constitutional freedoms protect that. And everybody has seen the little libraries that are around, the little ones on a windpole. I was leaving the Goodson Library, and it looked like they had just replenished this. I said, "I'm gonna take a look." And I opened it up, and this is the first book I found there. "Openly Straight." And I did not read the whole thing. Obviously, it was extremely well-used by somebody. And... But it's about a high school kid that's always pretended to be straight and goes to college and starts dealing with those issues. So I didn't go into it, but I will leave it with you. I don't really want it, but if you want to look at it. And the point was, that was like an aha moment, that, you know, books of all types can be found in all places, all public places even. So I put that out there for what it's worth, because in the library, we do have the opportunity for librarians to go through materials and make good decisions on behalf of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes?
I didn't know if I was gonna be able to attend, so I'm just trying to jot down right now. I'm Lauren Comstock. I live right here in Goodson. The first thing I wanted to mention was just the meeting schedule. I have young kids. And the reason you haven't seen my face before any of these meetings is because I had young kids. And a 10:00 AM Wednesday meeting schedule is just not... It's not open to the public. People who work or have small kids. Seven years I was home with the kids, I didn't have childcare. First year, they're both in school. So lucky for me, I can be here. Maybe not so lucky for everybody else. So I ask that you maybe consider having some of the meetings at different times that are maybe open to more people that work, that are retired, that maybe have small kids. Secondly, a constituent livestreams these meetings, which opens it up to more people. It would be amazing if our meetings could be livestreamed by you guys to open it up for more people to actually have access to these meetings, the people that can't attend. To touch on what the previous speaker mentioned, I trust our librarians to select the books. I think that they are the only people that should be, you know, putting books in places and deciding what books are going to be in our library. I don't think politically-appointed people or elected officials should be deciding that at all, and I think our constitution protects us from those things. I also trust parents to raise their kids and to make decisions based on their kids. We have already in place... Parents have to be part of a child getting a library card. A child cannot come in here and get a library card by themselves. So parents are already involved in that, and we have to trust parents to make those decisions for their own children. Secondly, we don't have a team of toddlers that are riding their power wheels up to the library without a parent. Their parent is with them when they're at the library, unless they're a teenager and they're driving. And at that point, they're already able to make some decisions for themselves, and the parents obviously trust them with their own library card. Let's see. The last thing... I have notes, I'm pretty sloppy. There has been a lot of talk of dismantling the Palmonki Regional Library system from elected officials and constituents in other counties. It's not popular amongst the voters in all of the counties. And recently, the decision that King William made, I know, was not in the best interest of their county, and I know that's kind of still in the works. But I would like to say, I have emailed, not since the new members of the board have been on, but I don't receive responses, and I know that that is pretty common with a lot of people. We don't hear responses from the Board of Trustees. It's the same thing with our Board of Supervisors. It's easy to be in an echo chamber if you're only communicating with a certain group of constituents. If you're only listening to those people because they agree with you, you're not being representative. And I ask for transparency, and I ask for open communication, because that is truly how you are going to make decisions that represent this community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Good morning. My name is Peggy Lavender. I live in Mechanicsville. And I want to talk about the town hall that was held in King William the beginning of this month. It was amazing attendance. It was terrible weather that night. A lot of things got canceled because of it, but in spite of all that, there was about 60 people there, and the majority of them were speaking up for their library, for transparency, for, you know, wanting answers as to what King William was doing, what they were thinking, who they had spoken to, what information they had when they decided to request removal from PRL. There was one person on the Board of Trustees present at the meeting, the King William representative. That person did not speak up or say anything in favor of Palmonki Regional Library. In fact, that person allowed people to say that King William doesn't have representation on the Board of Trustees. It's never been pushed back. Emails that have been attained through FOIA indicate that she is an advocate of King William pulling out of Palmonki Regional Library and has bad things to say about people who advocate for their own interests in...
Let me get you to stop for a second. Ellen?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we... Have we crossed the line with talking about one person as opposed to talking to the whole board?
Is Ms. Lavender directing her comments to one person?
Absolutely. Yeah.
I'm talking about something that happened.
But you're also...
I think the issue comes when comments are directed to a single board member, if I'm not mistaken. That's what the bylaws...
I feel they are, but that's kind of my...
And they're untrue.
I have the emails.
I don't think it's... If the comments are not being directed to a single board member, it's not violation of your bylaws.
Okay. Okay.
Describing my experience at the town hall, my information about what has been done for Palmonki Regional Library. What I know about the mission and the responsibility and the code of conduct for Palmonki Regional Library Board of Trustees is that they support Palmonki Regional Library. They advocate for them. They don't call people who advocate for PRL activists, outsiders, porn pushers, child abusers, et cetera. So I wanted to put that out there. I also wanted to say how much I appreciate having the data every month about how successful our library system is. We are over 100% for many data points, circulation, visitation, program attendance, meeting requests. The library staff on the ground is doing an amazing job in spite of this hostile culture. And I want to say, I'm not insulting anyone. I'm not directing anything at anyone. I am reporting facts. And that should be appreciated by a board who wants to operate in transparency and progress. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? Okay. If not, I will read you a section out of our bylaws that says, "The board may respond at the conclusion of citizens' time to comments or questions offered by citizens and information that is readily available in response to citizen comments may be provided at this time." So I will open it up to board members. Are there any board members that wish to make any comments?
I do. I chose not to speak at that meeting, because I wanted to hear all the sides. I understand King William's stance in some ways because of the past relationship they had with PRL, but I also know that PRL has changed. So I support PRL and the positive changes that have taken place. As far as calling names, that is untrue, and there are no emails that say what you have said. So I know what emails I have sent. So I just... I'm tired of the hostility, the mention of chaos, hostile environment. I'm tired of that. I think some members like to create that environment, and I'd like to see that stopped. So that's that.
Any other comments from the board?
I have two comments.
Okay.
First of all, we are going to have two evening meetings, one in October, one in March. So we have heard the request for trying to alter our schedule slightly to accommodate other, you know, people that can't make it on the mornings. And also, just blanket statement, this board does not choose books. Our books are chosen by librarians. And I'm not sure why there's this persistent belief that this board has anything to do with book selection. We have collection librarians that do that job. So I'm just putting it out there again. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? If not, we will move on. The next thing that we will look at is our consent agenda. And in the consent agenda, we have the draft minutes from July 24th Board Meeting. We have the Board Finance Report, the Board Warrants Report, the Monthly Deposit Record, and the Fund Schedule. Are there any comments about any of these documents before we do a motion? All right. In that case, I call for a motion to accept the consent agenda. So moved. Okay. Kristy?
Second.
A second? Okay. Ryan, thank you. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the consent agenda has been accepted. We'll move on now to the Director's Report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. These talking points are derived from the acting directorship report that is available on the library website under the meeting for today. So to start off, some performance highlights. We did surpass forecasted goals in circulation, library visits, and attendance at library-sponsored programs for fiscal year 24. We achieved 98.4% of our forecasted goal for our new borrowers. Our summer reading program was successful. We had over 7,000 patrons registered, logging over 53,000 books, with notable high attendance at the animal aware program. Also of note, we had over 13,000 people attend our programs over the summer. Some ongoing initiatives that we have beyond the summer reading program right now is a partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and the Library of Virginia. We're having a Smokey Bear 80th Birthday Reading Challenge. We launched that on the 12th of August with 116 participants registering to learn about fire, wildfire prevention, and the environment. That is available, promotion is in our website, but also through the Beanstack app that's on our website that folks use to register for the summer reading program. It's got a lot of activities and suggestions for reading, that sort of thing. We also are continuing our 1,000 Books for Forest Kindergarten Initiative with... We've transferred folks over to our new platform, so we have 417 signups since April 30th for that. And the goal is to read with your children 1,000 books before they head off to kindergarten. A great program. It provides a lot of initiative for the kids with badges and a prize at the end to reward them for their work. Some key meetings and administrative updates. I attended my first Capital Area Library Directors Meeting at the Amelia Library. Just gave some insights into regional library trends and updates from the Library of Virginia. Found that to be very, very helpful. We did have my first Board of Trustees orientation that we conducted. Barb Young and I and Ms. Landrum met for a few hours and just discussed all things library on the 14th. I created a binder that we will use in future orientations that will set the agenda and give information for new trustee members. I think also, we wanted to open this up. If anybody felt that they would like to go through this orientation, we'd be happy to organize that. The audit progress is on schedule. We've been providing weekly progress reports. Chair of the Audit Committee, Hannah McCandless. Various branch and department updates that are included on the report. I don't want to go into a lot of detail. They are there, but we've had a lot of successful programs, snakes, escape rooms, achieving high SRP signups in our branches. I thought it was notable in Upper King William, they met their fiscal year 24 summer reading goal despite the reduced hours and meeting room usage. Facilities and technology. We addressed various maintenance issues across branches, including some AC issues, lighting repairs, facility updates. IT and technology has been collaborating with new facility at Montpelier, maintaining our system back up, and has assisted with some FOIA requests. Customer feedback, positive feedback. We're receiving a lot of accommodations for staff support, successful programs, and library services. We have addressed some concerns about the card re-roll process and the Maxter app. I guess that these talking points are derived from the Director's Report. Have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have any updates about Montpelier opening the new facility? I know I saw it here, they said as soon as the parking lot was done.
Sure. We're starting to get some of that information from the county now. We've been working a little bit on some signage for the interior of the building, that sort of thing. Jim, did you want to?
Sure.
China? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question I was gonna have also about...
You want to do that?
Where's the status? Yeah. Where's the status of Montpelier?
Good morning. Jim Taylor, Deputy County Administrator for Hanover. And we're looking forward to opening Montpelier Rec Center and Library. As I know you know, this is kind of our first combination, library and recreation center for Parks and Rec. And it's been a little bit delayed for this or that, but we're looking forward to... The last I heard is the beginning of October would be kind of the grand opening, ribbon cutting. I will say, though, that we've been having some discussions about timing of moving some books and possibly doing a ceremonial move, like a human chain, where we would pass some books from one building to the other. And I don't know if that would happen before the beginning of October or at that time. So as we find out more, we'll keep you updated. And of course, you'll all be invited to attend. So very excited about it, looking forward to it.
Great. Did that answer? Do you have more?
Am I hearing you say that we will have a grand opening for the facility, but the library may not be...
No. When we do our grand opening, we'll make sure the library is open as well.
Is fully open.
Yes, yes. And I believe the space for the library is pretty much ready to go.
It is.
You've been over there?
There are two deans on shelving that still need to be addressed and some smaller...
Punchless little items, but I think the interior of the library is ready to go. I know they were working on some exterior issues and ordering this or that probably for the Parks and Rec side. There is a nice meeting room there as well, so I'm sure you'll be looking forward to scheduling some time up there for your meetings.
We have the October 23rd Board Meeting.
Oh, October 23rd! That won't be a problem. And I know you know this, but... And I'd be glad to volunteer to help books if that's what it takes, but that doesn't happen in a day.
Well, if you do a chain...
Sometimes with Mechanicsville, we were able, with volunteer help, to move the collection from one location to another.
Jamie, that's not for you, that's for Mr. Tate. I want Mr. Tate to understand that we need to be given, you know, a couple of weeks here to make sure that all of that happens.
Sure.
The computers are up, everything is done and working. So there are other systems that we need to have operate. We can't just roll the ball out on the court and make sure the baskets work.
Sure. No, understood. And we will follow up to get a little bit more information in terms of the movement of the collection and then also, you know, other issues with technology and that kind of thing. But I think we're getting close.
I'm sure we are, but we just, you know, at the grand opening, we want to be able to show off the library as much as they want to show off the gymnasium and that side of it, too.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Barbie, did you want to say something?
I think we were mostly waiting on the parking lot changing.
Right.
I have a quick question. Are there any plans to have, like, joint signage on the road front for the community center slash library, or what are the plans there?
I understand there's a new sign that's going to be placed there. So, you know...
Is it going to mention the library specifically, or do you know?
I will ask that question. I'll get a picture of it and share it with you.
Okay. That'd be great.
So, yeah. But I would imagine it's going to say something, you know, along those stuff, "Montpelier Recreation Center and Library."
Okay.
So, yeah.
Great.
Yeah. I know that we're ordering new drop-off box, mailbox for books. So, yeah. So I think they're, you know, kind of the final details of it, but it's gonna be good.
Great. Any other questions for Jamie or Jim? As long as you're up here.
I just had a comment. Great job.
Oh, it is.
I left my orientation with a lot of different papers and very confused. So, well done.
And it was well conducted also. Yeah. And you did a wonderful job. All right. Thanks for your... Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes. Good report again. Yes. Next is a legal counsel update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to everybody, Ellen Boyer, Office of the Hanover County Attorney. I don't have any updates for the board this morning, Madam Chair, so I do expect to be able to present some updates on policies for your consideration at the next meeting. And then, working with the chair, we may try to squeeze in a little bit of one, Part One of perhaps a three-part training program on FOIA, COIA, and retention efforts. So I'll be able to start that next month as well.
Great. And in that vein, one of the things that I'm thinking we probably ought to look at doing is the possibility of a court session between now and the next meeting to look at the policies. Okay. Oh, I know. We had planned that.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. All the policy changes that you're working on, those all come through the library staff before they come to the board, correct?
So the way I'm planning to approach it, there's a sort of a universe that... There's all the policies. There's a universe that the board has carved out for themselves to look at, and I'm gonna look at the balance of them. As I work on them, my intention is to share them with staff and to get their input on it before I bring it back to the board. That saves us from an awkward circumstance where I've made all these wonderful changes to the policies, and then staff say, "Well, it's completely not right or inefficient." So I need some help on the content side of the policies as well.
Okay. So that's a yes?
Yes, sir. That's a yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's been the plan. So, good.
Great.
Thank you. All right. We will move on now to our Standing Committee Reports. The first one is the Finance Committee. Barbara?
Finance Committee will meet... Well, Finance Committee, I want to thank Kristy and Bob Johnson, who unfortunately is not here today, for joining the Finance Committee. Of course, everybody's welcome. It will be Wednesday, September 11th, at 10:00 AM, right back here in Goodson. I look forward to it. I'll give the information to Jamie, and she will post it while in advance of the meeting.
And we're working real closely with Ken on all of this.
Oh, yeah.
Ken has done a wonderful job helping us with this. Yeah.
Ken is doing a great job.
Okay. Okay. The next report is the Personnel Committee Report. Bob could not be here because of family. So I will just real quickly say he's looking at the date of September 10th as the first meeting of that committee. That hasn't been finalized. So we'll, you know, when he's back in town, we will certainly get that finalized. And he is also working on building his committee. That... I know that Ryan and Sharon and Joe are all... He's... Has asked them to be on that committee. All right. And the third Standing Committee Report is from Kristy, the Audit Committee.
Yes. So the Audit Committee consists of myself and Barb Sloan, which is a good fit since we're both on finance as well. One of the reasons for just having two of us is because we can only be two of us on the audit calls that we have occasionally with PB Mayors and PRL staff. So it's gonna be the two of us. One of the things we have later on the agenda is the revised fund balance designation, and that's one of the things that is on the audit list that we kind of, we need to pass as a board in order to check one of those boxes to make sure we're moving forward with the audit. So I'm happy to see that that's on the agenda. Ken is still working with Hanover to get some donated services. I know Jim's on top of that, too, so they're working together to make sure that we get that in time to continue to move forward. So on September 6th, we have one of those follow-up... So on September 6th, we have one of those follow-up meetings to talk about where things are at. Is that correct? Mr. Taylor, meet a face, I wasn't sure. Yeah, I think the next meeting we've scheduled is September 6th in order to make sure that everything's ready for the next week where we have PB Mayor's coming in to do the final work through. So, yeah, thank you to Ken for all your work moving things forward. Please let us know how we can continue to support you to see things move, so, thank you.
Great. And we are on schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
Yes.
Wow, okay, good. All right. We'll move to the Ad-Hoc Committees, which is Long Range Planning Committee, and Sharita and Jamie are going to head that up. We're not... We have a report that we're gonna present later on the agenda. That committee has not really formed yet. It will once we get a chance to look at what we've created so far, so... Any other... Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, good. All right, we are ready to move to our old business, the changes of the Board of Trustees' meeting calendar. And we passed the meeting calendar last time, and we ended up having to make some changes to it. And so we have changed the date... The Finance Committee moved to a new date, and that is September 11th. And we have changed the Wednesday, December 18th location for the meeting to Goochlin, so we will be here again in December. What we would like to do with this motion is not only, to the board members, not only to have a motion to accept the changes to this, but to also allow changes to be made without... And Ellen, I'm turning to you for this, without us having to come and do a motion every time that we make a small change on this, because we're gonna be adding committee meetings onto here, so...
Right, I mean, I think it's just recognized that the schedule must be a little bit flexible. All meetings will be posted well in advance, and there'll be public notice of them, so you may need to make slight changes, report that if possible, and publicly post it as soon as you know about it. And I think that accomplishes the end. Just gives you a little more flexibility in trying to work with everyone's schedules to get meetings held.
Right, great. Do I have a motion from the board to not only make these changes, but to accept making minor changes without having to come back each time for a motion to make those changes? Do I have a motion?
I saw a move.
Okay.
Can we have just a move?
Yes. Well, let me get a second, and then we'll do discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah.
How much notice will we get of a change?
I guess as soon as we get the change, we will make sure that board members get it and that we get it posted. You know, we will, you know, we...
Well, you see, I'm asking about the change to, that's gonna be immediate. How much time?
Well, I think we legally have to give you three days, three working days, to do that. I would assume we will do a whole lot more than just three working days, yes.
I would hope.
Yes, that's... Yeah, I agree, I agree. It's not, again, it's not... We know that we're gonna be adding to this calendar.
Oh, right, right. I'm not trying to be difficult, or, but, you know...
Yeah, we're not gonna...
I'll be honest.
I promise I won't call you the night before.
You know, I'm retired, I'm not checking, I'm not checking. My email's not on my phone, I'm not checking it all the time, you know, and if particularly it's a important meeting, I want to make sure that I know about it.
Right.
In defense of change, or, it's, things happen, you know, I want to make sure I know.
We will make sure. I'll make sure you get a text.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you. I don't want to be... Okay.
Are there any other...
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Are any questions or comments about this motion?
No.
If not, let me call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is passed. All right. The second thing on the... On the old business is the revised fund balance designation. And, right, right, it's towards the back of your packet.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And...
Right before the five-year plan.
Barbara, am I gonna put you on the spot if I ask you to talk a little, you and Ken, to talk a little bit about this?
Well, I actually have a question about it.
Okay.
And that is that the one in the packet is slightly different than the one that Ken put together in his PowerPoint.
Ken, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, are you referring to the actual change in the balance, the amount being slightly different?
No, actually, I was thinking about the verbiage about...
Oh.
It just says future capital project. I understand the number difference, yeah, but to future branch capital project. I don't know if that makes a difference in what we're trying to accomplish here.
So I think this comes from a request that I had to remove the branch portion, just because if there was ever the possibility of doing anything at an admin location, that we wouldn't want it to be, you know, it's not restricted in this area, but we just wanted to make the description more broad so that it wasn't, you know, people could say, "Well, that was just for branch, and why is it going to the admin?" So that's why we changed that to just future capital project.
Makes sense, and thank you.
Okay. This started about three months ago when Barbara came up with an idea for a better fund balance report, and Ken took it and ran with it, and he has done a wonderful job with putting this together for us. These are based on the PowerPoint presentation that he presented at last month's meeting, and we had said it last month, we would give everyone some time to digest what we had talked about on the fund balance report, and that we would vote this month to accept either, accept or reject this particular format. So that's where we are right now, okay? Are there any other... Well, actually, I probably ought to call for a motion at this point. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept this, or what would you like?
I would like to make a motion to accept the designation of the fiscal year '24 fund balance as written in today's packet.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Is there any more discussion about this? Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? So the motion has passed, and we will begin to use this, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. Ken has really done a lot of good work on that. All right. We are ready to move into the new business, and in the new business, the first item is our five-year plan. And I want to say that what we... The last five-year plan that we had actually expired technically in 2020, and so we've been working off of the old plan. We've still been looking at the goals and objectives each year from there, but we felt like we needed to have a more current five-year plan in place. This is not the final five-year plan. This is kind of a gap saver here, so... On the committee that worked on this, we had Ellen, who worked with us, and Jamie and Sharita, and Christie, and I worked with them, and Ken worked with us. So this has been, it was distributed to everyone, and I want to open things up for discussion before we... If anybody has any comments or questions, I have a couple just real quick edits that I would like to add to, okay? If you look at, in the preface, the last paragraph, it's the third line, it says, "The Board of Trustees is in turn developed." I think that needs to be, is developing, a one-year action plan, because that is something that we're gonna work on with this. And then, on, in the objectives, on the last page, it's one, two, three, the third objective, the second line, where it says amendments to the board and develop, and I think it just needs an A, a schedule for regular... It just is missing that word is all, so... All right. What I'd like to do is open this up for a motion first, so that we can open up for actual discussion on the document itself, of it not just edits on the words. Is there anyone who can make a motion that we... What do you want to make a motion on, or what we do with this?
Okay. I'll make a motion for it, open it up for discussion.
Okay. Make a motion that we accept this, or...
Oh.
And then we can open up for discussion, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That we accept.
Okay, okay. Do I have a second?
Sure.
All right. And I will open it up now for discussion.
So I just want to clarify that, as you said, this is kind of a stopgap, right? To get us up to standard, to have a plan, and that we're still committed to actually going through the process of having a well-thought-through five-year plan with input from our stakeholders.
Yes.
Correct.
That is correct.
And according to the timeline here, it says that that will happen later in 2025.
Okay, correct.
Okay. That is correct, yes. Other question?
I just have a basic question under goals. Going to set down, encourage the use of technology, including artificial intelligence, to increase efficiency in library service. Is that for staff or for users? For both, or...
I would say for both.
For both, yes. There's a lot of talk about AI right now and the library's role in helping customers understand what it is, how it works, and we're also talking about that from a staff training standpoint as well. So it is, yes, both.
So it's kind of a use in, perhaps, I don't know how to use the word, training, but kind of informational...
Yes.
Okay, Sean. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So I just want to go back to something you pointed out at the beginning, which is the statement in the preface, paragraph four, where it says, "The Board of Trustees in turn will develop a one-year action plan to guide library operations from September to October 2025." Where do the objectives on page three fit into that? Is this part of that plan, or are you referring to something different?
No, this is part of that plan.
Okay.
And it will be, in fact, if it... This is hot off the presses, because it's something I've been working on. What we had talked about is trying to put together a calendar of tasks that we define, but these goals will help us, goals and objectives, will help us drive how we meet those tasks, okay? Is that it? And I will pass this out, this will get posted. It is not something that has been posted yet, I don't believe. And it... What it is, is it's really kind of a sample of what I'd like to see us do, and what will happen is that we'll have general tasks through the year. And again, this is just a sample, okay? Even the items that I put under general are a sample, but as you, as you as committees meet in the next month, I would like for you to build your input for, you know, what are the things, say, with the Finance Committee, what is something you normally would do in September? What is something you would normally do in October and so forth? So that we can begin to have a list of tasks that we look at each month and say, "These are items that are coming up, we want to make sure that, you know, that they're getting addressed." And again, this is, you know, it's a table, it's a word table, and it literally, you know, as you move through it, it'll put the bullets in for you, so... That is this part of developing the one-year action plan for the board, using the tasks and then the objectives to apply them, okay?
And I understand that the library staff has kind of given a bit of priority to these objectives that are listed here as far as what they think are the most important things.
Yes, yes, library staff went through this and put them in order, yeah, rank order. Any other questions? Okay, in that case, I think we can call for the question. All those in favor of adopting this five-year plan, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This will be our working plan at this point. Thank you, okay? And as a part of it, we will have a calendar that will get developed. All right. Do we have, we are now down to the calendar of tasks, which is what I just passed out, okay? And then, so we are now down to other business. Is there any other business that needs to be addressed in this meeting? This might be your record.
I believe yes.
Yes.
I do have a question.
Yes, that is fine.
The meeting that was held in King William, were... If I was invited, I didn't see a notice. Was it sent out to all board members?
The Town Hall meeting that was referenced.
The Town Hall. For instance, Citizens Time, was a Town Hall meeting held by one of the Board of Supervisors, Mary Sue Bancroft, to hear general concerns from her constituents, but the overwhelming majority of the folks that spoke were talking about the library.
Okay. Was it sent to the, was the invite sent to the whole board?
No, and library staff, I was not invited to that, to that meeting.
It's... I know it's King William, you know, if I had gone, I wouldn't have spoken, but I would have listened. It's actually probably the closest library to my home. It's closer than I think Mechanicsville, from where I live.
There is a recording of the meeting on the...
And I wouldn't have, I would have chosen, I wouldn't have spoken because I was in a different jurisdiction. And going back to when I was on the commission, we had a lot of Town Halls, and when, if we went to one out of our... In that case, if we went to one out of our magisterial district, we would go as a guest and not speak. But quite often, the other, in that case, the other planning commissioner would sometimes invite us. But it was also, depends on how the advertisement was done, or would limit to how many of us could go also. So I know the complications of it, but I was just curious. I know it didn't, I know I didn't get it. If I got an invitation, I missed it.
We did not, and as... We did not. And, and as Jamie said, the staff did not either. This was, this was King William dealing with their constituents. So.
It, I understand, but I think it would have been nice just to, for this board to have presence there to show.
It would have been nice.
Interest.
If we had known.
Interest. If we had known.
We didn't.
Just, just to show.
I would have been there if we had known. I did not know.
For instance, as chair, I would have been there if I had a chair.
Right, I would have too.
Would have spoken, but I'd have been there.
And in fact, the.
This is not a criticism. This is just a question.
The board meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting, right after they made the announcement, Jamie and Sharita attended, and Barbara and I attended.
Oh, I know y'all did.
And both Jamie and I spoke at that one. So, and, and again, King William is, you know, there's a lot of things that are going on internally right now.
I understand that part.
And so, you notice it's not even on the agenda for that reason, because we're not quite sure where things stand right now.
Right.
So.
Okay.
Okay. And I understand, it's not a criticism. I'm just saying, you know, when you don't know about something, you can't, you know, I, I would think it would have been nice for us to have been invited, but that was their choice.
That was their choice.
That was their choice. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items? I have one item that I would like to bring up. I think we have been working with Ellen real closely on revisions of policies. And I think that we are at a, at a point that there are some that we would really like to address sooner than later, that staff has worked on, on some. And so, I think it's at a point that I think we need to set up a work session in between this meeting and the next, our next meeting at the end of September. I have three dates that I have, I, I've looked at. I'm trying to find dates that are kind of in between the two meetings that will give board members and staff members enough time to do something in between those meetings so that we can, you know, if something comes out of a, a work session. The three dates that I had, had put down were September 12th, which is a Thursday, September 13th, which is a Friday, or September 16th, which is a Monday. What we can do, we don't have to decide on a date. Today, I can send, we can send an email out this afternoon, and we'll get a consensus back and see if we can set, get a meeting set up. And as soon as we get that meeting set up, we'll get it posted and get the location and so forth. But I do think we've got some work on, on policies that we need to, we need to have the time to focus on some of these. So, yeah, I hope everybody is, would be okay with that if we, if we do a work session in between. We don't, I don't think we need a motion or anything like that. I will send a message this afternoon. It'll be a little later. I have a doctor's appointment, so I'll be after that. But I will send that out today. Okay? All right. Any other questions, comments, items? Okay, in that case, do I have a motion that, to adjourn the meeting?